And I came here in 1986 to run it for myself. I signed the papers and I was owner of the Red Barn Incorporated. People come in here for the experience, more so than I think anything else. And they love the fact that somebody's actually taking the time to listen. Maybe you learn in proportion to how much you listen and care. If you can find that balance between doing what you love, that isn't really work, that might pay the bills, and can resonate with people, and actually to some extent, help people. Without my customers, I would be doing what I don't love, guaranteed.
We are live. You all please rise for the Budge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll call this meeting to order. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out this evening. Our first order of business is public announcements. First one, there will not be a town council meeting on November 22nd of 2017. This will be our only meeting this month. Number two, second quarter property taxes were due on Friday, November 3rd. Number three, the 2018 dog licensing tags will be available to town office. Current 2017 dog licenses expire on December 31st. Number four, in December, the council will begin reviewing appointment applications for several open volunteer positions on many local boards and committees, including the following: Budget Committee, Planning Board, Land Use Board of Appeals, Economic Development Committee, Board of Assessment and Review, Board of Appeals, Voter Registration Board of Appeals, and the Local Access Television Board of Directors. If you are interested in serving your community, please complete an appointment application. This form is available at www.farefieldme.com or at the Town Clerk's Office commencing on November 13th. Appointments will be made at the council's January annual organizational meeting. Number five, non-essential town services will be closed on Friday, November 10th, in observance of Veterans Day, and November 23rd and 24th in observance of Thanksgiving Our second order of business is public hearings, to hear from the public on an application for an automobile graveyard/junkyard permit for Harry's Towing and Salvage located at 228 Norwich Walk Road. Is there this public hearing open? Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak at this time?
Hi, my name is Jeff Karen. I talked last meeting, you probably remember. I have the budding landowner to the salvage out of 220, both my laws about the property. Done a lot of research. I'll go through what we did last time. Basically, I'm here to make sure ordinances are followed. Everything I read, they have to be followed before permits are reissued and all that. The 500-foot seems to be a problem with him. He didn't like the 500-foot from my house, because I talked to him and he understood the well and all that. I said, well, the ordinance is 500 feet from my dwelling. So, right now, I have approximately 18 vehicles from what I can see from my patio, and several school buses that fall well within that parameter. I've talked to the code enforcement officer. She says he is going to move them. I said, okay, but I know my past, what I've seen in life, you don't get it handled going in. It's a struggle later, and I don't want to have to come back to meetings, because this is not me. I just want the ordinances followed. I read the first meeting when they got the permit, when I wasn't invited to, and read the minutes of that, and there was a mesh fence ordered per DOT for the road, because that's part of their rules. That was ordered then, and it's still not there, so that's what concerns me about making sure the rest of this is followed through. I get to protect my property, you know, I get to be able, my kids got to sell this place someday. They're going to inherit it. They need to get rid of my house and my land, and I can do everything in my power, just make sure it's safe. If other stuff happens, so be it, but I really, I need the ordinances. They're there for a reason.
Yes.
I'd just like the council to understand that. I have no problem. They'll never hear another word from me if we follow the ordinances out. I've been there for 30 years with the previous one, and I dealt with a lot, so just now, I'm smarter and older. I've read a lot of laws and the rules, and just get the cars moved, follow the ordinances, and I won't have to come back here, because I don't enjoy it. It's not my cup of tea personally. I just feel we're home right now, but I'd just like the council to understand that we just want them to follow it. It's your rules, you set them up, so I don't think I'm asking to change the world. I just follow the rules and I'll be happy, and I won't be bothering anybody else from here on out. So I just want you to consider that for me. I'm not stopping him. I don't want to stop him from getting his liability order permits. I just want him to follow from the word go, from this point on, because as far as I can see, for the last year, they haven't been followed. Cars are there. So, I realize, code enforcement said DEP went and checked the site and all that, they cleared the soil, and well, good thing, because that'd been another whole problem, but it still doesn't move the cars at 500 feet from my dwelling. So that's all I'm asking. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to speak at this time? Seeing none, declare this public hearing closed. Our third order of business is public comments. Members of the public may speak to the council on any item or reserve the right to speak on a specific item that is on the meeting agenda when the item is addressed.
I would like to make a motion at this time to move the number eight order of business up to here, which is on the snow plowing for the school, for the high school.
I have a motion to move the eighth order of business, number one.
Seconded.
Seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of that motion carries? And at this time, we will review the discussion agreement with SAD 49 on the snow plowing agreement. Is there anyone from SAD 49 that wishes to speak at this time?
Well, I guess the... Sorry. Shelley Rednicki, I'm a member of the MSAD 49 School Board and chairman of the board. I am here not as representing the whole board, but just to let you know where the board stands. Right now, we tabled this issue at our last meeting. Concern that we had was that there was an end date in the contract that was submitted to us. Originally, Michelle asked Dr. Baker to write it up. He wrote up a basic memorandum of agreement, which was our understanding that the council had asked for. And then, when we get it back, it has an end date of May rather than an actual, because I know that this council had, in the meeting that I was at, several meetings ago that it was discussed, was that it was something that we would continue and look at ongoing and try to work together to keep this, because I believe it was chair had mentioned the fact that it's just shifting it from one place to the other, the money that would be to do the snow plowing. So, you know, to us, that was, that was how we looked at it. So, having an end date was the one thing that concerned us, I believe, if that's the rest of my board.
The end date is on there because of some legal issues that we need to overcome.
Uh huh.
So, we need to get those put to rest before we can continue forward with this agreement. I believe they're being looked into.
Yes.
At this, okay, they're being looked into at this time. So, for us not to blatantly violate the law, we need to make sure that we're covered, you're covered, and that we can find some, something amenable to move forward, so that we can do it without breaking the law.
Right, but if, and I-
And we can't, we put an end date on there, because we'll finish plowing, we'll take care of this season.
Uh huh.
That was our intent, was to take care of the season.
Right.
But then going forward, we need to make sure, regardless of the, we're kind of outstepping our bounds here by doing it this year, but it was the contract, we were on the liability insurance to cover any unforeseen accidents, but there are some legal issues that we need to present to the school board, and we need to come up with a plan going forward.
Right, and I understand that.
That came from the town attorney.
Um, did you have something?
And MMA.
Yeah.
I'm not going to let Terry speak.
It came from the town attorney and MMA.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Terry, Michelle, school board member. My concern is, what are we talking about? We have not received any notice about what specifically are the legal issues.
No, we're, correct. We are trying to get that together to present that to the board.
Okay, in doing so, okay, I understand what you're trying to, what you're saying. Our problem is that if we go into like April, well, if we go past January, without an established program or contract, that's going to impact budget process significantly.
Mm-hmm.
And we'd just like to know ahead of time, I guess, where we're going to go, where this is going to go, because if we have to go out and put-
Put something to bid, right. You need the time.
Well, we need to buy trucks and whatnot.
Right, you need the time to be able to do that and work it into your budget process.
Correct.
I believe that there was a recommendation of putting this to-
To 2019.
2019.
2019.
Okay. Okay, that's, okay, we hadn't heard that, that's-
Right, that was part of the discussion, so that we can present that to you, so that we can expedite this process as quickly as possible.
Okay, we're not trying to be obstructive or anything like that.
Nope.
We're just trying to, try to do this in a process where nobody gets hurt.
Mm-hmm.
It's significant if we have to go out and put that amount of money out to, in the budget. It's huge.
Yeah.
We're talking about cutting teachers, probably, but, you know, it's a significant amount of money.
Yep.
And we understand that, and we, hopefully, can keep that going. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Derek.
Tim Martin also with the school board. We understand where the town attorney's coming from, Mr. Lee, and also MMA, and dealing insurance, so I've read what was sent to us, and I've had the opportunity to talk to most of the counselors. We were just hoping for more of an open end, Mike, until you guys developed, which you need to protect yourself illegal, why put a date on it? So, when you put a date, it's closing that contract to 2018, and if you're going to put us in that position, then we're going to have to shift that budget from the town budget for the public works into the school board budget.
Mm-hmm.
And that's not what we want to do. We know you're better equipped to handle it. You have the people mentality. We've been, we've had this agreement for 50-plus years. So, we understand that MMA is now saying, well, we have to do something. However, when you look into it a little deeper, it's not really what they're stating it has to be. So Erin said there was a possibility to throw in a legal clause to leave it open, maybe revisit it every two, three years to make sure the town's protected in its best interest.
Absolutely.
So before we sign that agreement that Michelle sent, that ends it on May 18th, I'd rather the town council go back and say, well, you're going to revisit this in 2019 or 2020, and not close it in May of 2018, because like Terry just stated, we've got to start on our budgets, just like you have to start on your budgets.
Mm-hmm.
So, we'd only be throwing $100,000 worth of snow plowing into the public work budget if we're going to shift that over to SAD 49. And we'd rather work with you, like we have always had that good relationship, because it's just a shift in taxpayer, and you guys are better equipped to handle that than we are. So, we're hoping you can change that clause, that last clause, and remove that May of 2018 date, to give us a little more time, meet with the attorneys, make sure the town's protected, and give, you know, the school a protection as well.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak at this time? We'll take care of that, I'll take care of that. And then, at this point, I think we will move on to the fourth order of business, reports from staff and committee.
So, you have the regular monthly report for last month.
Yes.
A lot of that included a bunch of information regarding our storm that we had at the very tail end of the month, so I'm not going to reiterate any of that. On November 2nd, the Technology Committee did have its first kickoff meeting, and it was very successful. We met right here. The group will be meeting again on November 20th. The plan is to meet every two weeks to get oriented with the inner workings of the station, and then to move to once a month. We're working on a work plan timeline and hope to be able to report back to council by June 30th of 2018, so the end of the fiscal year. And then also, on November 2nd, I attended the Waterville Chambers Open House and ribbon-cutting ceremony for their new addition, which was actually constructed by Fairfield's own Fairfield Drafting, so it's a beautiful addition over there. The Economic Community Development Committee did reschedule their meeting to review the credit enhancement agreement that you'll be looking at later, and Jeff can give you a little bit more information on that, but it was originally scheduled for the day of the storm, and we ended up moving it to last Monday. And then, also, KRDA has hired a new executive director, Jim Dinkle. He is actually residing right here in Fairfield for the time being. I met him today. The city of Waterville invited myself and some surrounding managers to have lunch with him, so to get to know him a little bit better. So I think he's going to be a good fit for the park. And then also, the Public Works Department has finally finished putting up winter sand. Construction has caused an incredible delay this year, so they will be getting to some of these other projects around town that have been put on the back burner while they were doing that. And also, there's been very little progress at BR Fuel's facility in the last couple of weeks. Their last, your most recent 30-day extension, of course, goes through until Monday. We're fine at this point. We'll see where things end up, but if this will probably, if things are not substantially resolved, you will definitely have to take some sort of action at your first meeting in December. But we're keeping the attorney in the loop, and we've been trying to keep, stay in the loop with them as to the progress. And then also, real quick, I was able to get some official numbers from yesterday's election. So, currently, the town has 4,371 registered voters, but of course, that will change after this past election. But we ended up having 1,162 votes cast, and there were 169 absentees, 157 were returned. We had two ballots that were rejected, absentee ballots not returned on election day were nine. There were 23 new voters, or change in voter registration, and then of that, 18 were new, and five of them were current voters that either changed party. So there'll be an official report that you'll get later on from the town clerk, so, but she wanted me to at least pass that along to you.
Very good. Very good.
And the Economic Community Development Committee did meet on Monday, although there wasn't enough, it was for a quorum, we did have a discussion. Bruce Harrington was there, Michelle, myself, Garvin Don, and the member, there was a representative from the party interested in the property up on Escolon Drive.
Okay, good.
And we did have a good conversation about the project up there. There was a little bit of work, when we left the meeting, there was still a little bit of work left to do in the language, to be able to put that to bed, but that date is quickly approaching, so, like, very quickly.
Yes.
Good. Anything else?
That's it.
That's it. All right, thank you. All right, includes that. Let's see, our fifth order of business is to weigh the reading of and accept the minutes as printed or amended for meeting number 21-17, held on October 25th, 2017.
So moved.
In a second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Obstain.
Any abstain? One abstain?
I didn't watch the meeting, so.
Okay. All right. Our sixth order of business is to treasurer's warrant, approve the treasurer's warrant number 27 in the amount of $444,257.67.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries. Our seventh order of business is take action on the following items of business. Order that the town council here, order the town council hereby order that the town council here-
Looks like there's some extra words.
Yeah.
There's some typos there.
How about the town council hereby approve an application for an automobile graveyard/junkyard permit for Harry's Towing and Salvage located at 228 Norwich Walk Road?
I will make a motion that it is approved pending approval by our code enforcement officer's inspection.
I would second that, as stated.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve it pending approval from the code enforcement officer. Any other discussion?
I think that's reasonable.
Okay, all those in favor? Motion carries. And I'd be under the impression that Nicole will have a report for us on the findings?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Item 17-97, order the town council hereby schedule the date and time and location for the annual organizational meeting, apparently to be held on January 10th, 2018, at 6:30 PM, at the council chambers. So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Just one little quick thing for you. So typically, this is the first year where it has not been the first Tuesday, or the first business day of the first of the year. So, this is basically what would be normally your second Wednesday night meeting.
Okay.
So no more meeting the day after New Year's? We're fine to move that anytime you want to in January.
That was a charter.
It was a charter piece, and when the charter was amended, it just says that it needs to be scheduled-
For the first-
The first scheduled meeting in January.
Excellent. All right. So, do we in fact have to approve that, since it is a charter change?
No, it doesn't give a specific date.
Oh, it does not?
And because the first of the year changes, you actually set when you regularly meet.
Okay.
So we're not doing the third? Is that what you're saying?
Right.
Correct.
I gotta take that out. I gotta take it out, then.
All right.
No, that's not right.
All right, so I guess with that, all those in favor? All right. Item 17-98, order the town council hereby approves and assigns the resolution to exercise the MRC slash PERC PUT option, discontinuing municipal solid waste disposal with PERC, and to authorize the treasurer to apply corresponding reimbursements of capital equity investment funds in the estimated amount of $24,000 to be applied to the reserve fund slash account for future solid waste needs.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this?
We've had various discussions on that.
Yes, I think we've beaten this one here pretty-
Pretty good.
I do have an update for you.
You do?
Because remember last meeting, we were questioning about the $24,000 of being a much reduced number than we were going to be.
Oh, right.
So the $24,000 that you're going to be receiving, that the town will get, is actually for the PUT option, which is simply the equity that's in PERC. Next month, there'll be an additional check for $28,717, as estimated at this time, for the debt service reserve fund that will also come to the town. And then, once the books are closed out from the fiscal year for the MRC and everything is done, sometime January, August of next year, we should receive an additional $540,000. So, which is the tipping fee reserve stabilization fund, which is where the substantial amount of the money is, is in that tipping fee stabilization fund.
Okay.
So, as of the most recent mailing that I just received this week, actually, it looks as though we should be getting something in the neighborhood of about $600,000. And conversations, just so you're aware, have already started with area, we were talking about it just against, with Waterville, Winslow, Oakland, about all of our recycling needs for the future, and whether those, they are looking to do similar, put those funds into a designated account to know that they could be used for future solid waste and recycling needs.
Absolutely.
Much better number than we were thinking.
Yeah, a lot better, yes.
Much better.
All right, thank you. Let's see, item, let's see.
1799.
Yeah.
Well, order to decide, a motion in a second.
Yeah.
We should vote on that.
Probably, I would take.
Yeah, all right, be a good idea. All right, all those in favor? Oh, looks like that one passes.
Okay.
All right, now we'll move on to 1799. Orders the town council hereby authorizes the town manager to sign on the behalf of the town of Fairfield, a two-year contract with Waste Management Disposal Services of Maine Incorporated for municipal solid waste disposal services for the period of April 1st, 2018, to March 31st, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
No.
Seeing none, all those in favor? Let's see, item 17-100, order the town council hereby selects one candidate and authorizes the town manager to cast a ballot for the Municipal Review Committee Board of Directors.
So moved.
A second then.
Do you have anyone that wishes to be a-
Do you have, there was a ballot. Do you have the ballot? Because I don't have the ballot in my packet.
It's not in my packet. I do not.
I didn't see it.
Uh, nope, that's a revolution.
Unfortunately, Christine must still have that, so.
Have to take care of it the next time, or what?
Yeah. I don't believe any of the seats were contested, so it was like literally vote for-
Oh.
Yeah, I think it was fine. It was, it was not a-
Vote for two, and there were two?
And there were two.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think we can easily take care of it, so.
All right. Can you just email that to us?
I will. I will send it to all of you, and if it isn't easily taken care of, we'll just have to put it on the next one. It's just that simple.
Okay, gotcha. Very good. That works. So do we, well, we can approve this pending?
Table it then, right? Till the next time?
Well, no, because she, if she votes before we have our next meeting, that's right.
So, we don't, what are we going to do with it?
Well, you know, we can approve it pending any, any upcoming issues.
So you can approve it.
Yeah, well, so moved.
All right. Friendly amendment?
Friendly amendment.
Okay, all those in favor? Motion carries.
If it's contested, oh.
All right. Item 17-101, order the town council hereby authorizes the purchase of three new patrol PC Rhino Tab laptops for the police department cruisers, and authorizes the treasurer to appropriate the expenditure from the following accounts in the following amounts. But it appears that it has been highlighted on my sheet for some particular reason?
I believe it's because you are the only one that has an agenda that has those numbers in the accounts actually listed. So I had sent an email out on Tuesday listing the three possible accounts that we could take the funds from, and whether or not if you purchased the whole packet, or whether you got just a portion there. and whether or not you purchased the whole packet or whether you got just a portion thereof. And so what we would need to do is have you vote to take the amounts specifically from those capital reserve accounts in order for that to happen. I mean, you could simply state... That could be summed up simply, you know, purchase them without the printers and divide it equally amongst those three reserve accounts. You could decide to take it from one. Or you could decide to buy one, not three. You could decide not to buy any. The issue we're struggling with right now is, of course, we do have two on loaner. We have another one that will not work when it's cold. And we only have the loners from the county for a couple of months. So we need to do something.
Well, at this point, I will make a motion that we...
They're only on loan for a couple of months?
The couple that the county has given us.
The county's given us.
The sheriff at the county said that he could only allow us to use them for a couple of months.
Oh. Okay.
They evidently already had a deal where they're promised to another municipality.
Oh.
And because our emergency kicked in, they stalled to allow us to use them for a short period of time and that they're supposed to be going someplace else.
Well, it was...
But it was very nice of them to give us, buy us that kind of time, so...
Yeah. I'll make a motion that we accept the request from the police department, which includes the installation from Yankee Communications.
That's second then.
Okay. Sixteen thousand, nine hundred and two dollars. Sixteen thousand, nine hundred and two. That would be the... That's the total amount that the chief requested?
That's the full amount, including the printers.
Including the printers. Okay. All right. And that will come out of the respective drug interdiction... Yeah. Interdiction, Police Department Reserve, and the...
Computer Reserve.
Computer Reserve account.
And they have a seven-year warranty, correct?
Yes.
That is correct. Yes.
Which is why they would be eligible for capital reserve funds because they have a longer shelf life than a couple of years.
And what's the timeframe that these would be able to be purchased and installed?
So I believe as soon as we can give them the order, they can get them shipped. So it should only be a couple of weeks, actually. The only snag that we could possibly run into is if we don't get the amounts donated from Yankee like they believe that they can. But I believe that's only supposed to be somewhere in the neighborhood of about three hundred dollars apiece, which is definitely within a purview to... For us to charge the operating budget and then if we need to come back afterwards, we can, so... So what we're hoping is, is that within thirty days, we can have these received, programmed, installed, and end up running.
It's a very important thing to have in producers anyways.
Okay. So with that motion in a second, is there any further discussion? No. All those in favor? Motion carries. And I would like to thank Somerset County for loaning us those computers to help us through this period so we can...
Get us through it. Absolutely.
Yes. So that we can get this emergency taken care of. All right. Then, moving on to our eighth order of business.
Which we took care of already, right?
Yeah, except for discussion of other council business. Is there... Jeffrey?
So a couple of weeks ago, we had the Home Marching Band Show that I had been talking about.
Yes.
That was very well attended, short of one unfortunate incident where someone got hurt. But there was, I believe, in total, counting ours, there was nine bands in attendance. And, you know, there was... It was a wonderful evening. So really want to thank all the folks for coming out and supporting that event. And, yeah, that was... It was a great evening. The band also went on the following week to Stanford and posted, for my knowledge of the band's performance and the years that I've been around it, personal best score for their final performance. So that was a very good note to end on.
Very nice.
Excellent.
It's good to hear things like that, you know, positive things coming out of some of the benefits of the Crawford Fund and the extremely hard work of the kids that put into making that happen.
Absolutely. And the dedicated instructors as well.
Yes, absolutely.
Yep.
Thank you.
Very good.
Beverly?
No, Matt's in tonight.
John?
Just, I would like to, from a council standpoint, congratulate the Lawrence Bulldog Football Team for being in the state finals for...
Yay, Bulldogs!
Eastern Maine. Yeah, okay. And I have nothing at this point. And with that, the next regular meeting of the Fairfield Town Council will be on Wednesday, December thirteenth, two thousand and seventeen. And at this time, the council will recess to sign any documents that require the signatures, council members. Motion for recess?
So moved.
Second.
Mayor recess.